Alright, so it's Policy Committee at six o'clock, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and read through, we did receive, I guess, comments on the policy for, oh wait, no. Oh yeah, immunization requirements. And apparently for policy fifty-three ninety-five payroll details. Comments for immunization, agreeing, no question or comment, looks okay. Aside from formatting issues, my issue isn't so much with the policy as much as it is with the district website, it's difficult to find the exemption form on the district website and needs to be more readily available for parents to read and fill out, and I agree. Did we identify it in here? Is it a form number?
When we changed this, when they made the initial change to the statute, you had to forgive them the exemption statute or the exemption form along with
The policy?
Or along with those registration, right, information, it has to go. And I thought we put all this in here and I thought we also need to make change the law before this year, I guess they need some updating. It all had to go together, like, you couldn't tell the parent or the guardian, whoever, that these quote "requirements" without also telling them that there were exemptions. So you had to tell them the same thing at the same time.
Okay.
Burnly and in light.
Since they complete registration, um, is that what, the community of
Perhaps I wouldn't
But it's, there's not
But if the parent is saying, I don't know what it is.
Right, there should be, we should have a form for, that is aligned with, we should have thirty-two, thirty-five twenty-five F, which is the exemption form, yeah. But I'm just, okay. Here, I'm gonna modify. Is this school authorities regarding child's This records signed by physician, physicians representative, health care professional or pharmacist. Received and processed, received immunizations specified by state board. Moving through, contractions, disease, hospital, frequency of immunization prescribed by state board. Yeah, 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 okay, so that's immunization required.
And then, oh, two, it's like, uh
Exemption.
Yeah. And I don't know why they use that language, because they're not called a "requirement", I mean, they are the recommendation. You know, most people follow it, but they're not.
Well, they're a requirement by law to attend public education, is what I think it is. It's not a requirement to have immunizations, it's a requirement to come to public education.
But then, they're not required here.
Right, because you could, exactly.
I mean, even the CDC doesn't call it that. They're recommendation, it's box, it's just like, on religious or
Okay. So, by law, no law required to Can you print that up, we can create a form? I mean, it, it's silly, we shouldn't be sending people all of our blue shirts. Or we put the link in this document, if they don't have read form. And, and, uh, so
Well, then, we just put this form
Can you put the form for me?
Yeah.
Just please.
Yeah, that would be if they update the link or something, probably the paper.
You've got, you've got the paper.
Right, right.
The document.
You don't have to rely on the link being there the next time.
You just put our number. I would think that that is very registration. I would think, I sure it is, I mean, that's what I read, where I had to walk around, registration, I'm, uh It would be something that has to be signed by, you know, it doesn't, if they're, if they're doing any of the exemption, which is unless they were doing number one. Okay. She would prefer just to sign a statement. So, this is what we use?
Yeah, so, um, enrollment
Okay. Okay. We should, can we, cause you're the thing, the viewer. Can we create this as our form? Okay, let's do that. And let's go here, and it will probably be Idaho, so, immunization parents, and exemption. So, again. So this will go Google.
Oh, oh, oopsies. Or
Oopsies. There, okay. So, we will call that this, and we'll put it, make sure it's just got our logo and whatnot, and if it has to be on like a longer sized page, I think I'm fine with that, but I think it is something that we need to have right next to the policy. There's a back to that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Do you want it to have the logo on there, or do you want it to look like it could be in policy format?
What do you think? Hold on. So, like, when they open thirty-two, thirty-five twenty-five F, they'll just see this form. And it won't have our caption and crap on it, stuff, or stuff.
Identifying logo.
There we go, it won't have our identifying logo on it.
Do you think there's anything wrong with that?
I think it should. No, I mean, I guess it's hard.
Cause then she can prepare a two-page document that is that, so people can click on the form and pull it up. Okay.
I mean, the bottom line is, you just have to check the law to, to get a good understanding and understand the constitution and
It's an optional statement.
Yeah, at the bottom, yeah. But parents get very intimidated if they follow that.
Okay.
I mean, we can use it, we can put it there. If we're gonna use it just like that, I would just need the air identified.
Okay, let's do that, then. The form.
Because it's not ours, it's theirs.
Right, and that's why I called it the Idaho School Immunization. Because apparently this is what the nurses use. So, we'll just keep, I guess, prison on down that way. So what does the rest of this policy say? Perfect. Preschool children need only be aged appropriately immunized with the required vaccines, D-TAP, fifth dose polio. The fourth dose is not necessary, the third dose was administered. Why do we have all this? Why are we telling them this? The use of the combination of vaccines may result in an extra fourth required dose, except by speed. Where did, we don't know where we got this combination.
It seems to be verified in tables, which don't.
Okay.
It gives you, you know, it gives you, you know, September, nineteen eighty-nine to September two thousand five, but here it's, it's preschool kids, it's this, it's the dose. I, I think it's just, it seems to be another way of clarifying the table, which doesn't, is difficult to follow, I think. The table is difficult to follow.
And can you directly from that?
Oh, okay, alright, well, that's working. That's all taken out. That's taken out. Immunization record must be signed by a physician, physicians representative, another licensed healthcare professional or pharmacist, and shall verify that such child has received or is in the process of receiving immunization specifications by state board of health and welfare, or can effectively demonstrate through verification in a form approved by the Department of Health and Welfare immunity gained through prior contraction of the disease. It's written by a lawyer somewhere. The immunization record must be signed by physician or pharmacist. Period.
Period.
Period. We should say, the record shall verify child received, was in the process of receiving immunizations as child has received, was in the process of receiving, comma, immunization. Or it can effectively demonstrate your verification.
I, did you stop at welfare and say if?
Well, it's, it is two sentences, they, they should have said it, so it says, or it can effectively demonstrate, cause it's referring back to Yeah. The immunization record in a form approved by the Department of Health and Welfare. Immunity gained through prior contraction of the disease.
Maybe stop it at welfare, prior contraction of the disease can be, yeah, no. It's, it's just sort of ungainly sentence, it's too much.
Okay, so the immunization record shall verify the child has received, was in the process of receiving immunizations.
As specified, but still, health and welfare, period. Then somehow, that next, make that a third sentence, but not the way it sits. If prior contraction of the disease can be verified through a state department of health and welfare form demonstrating, you know, yeah.
Immunity gained through prior contraction.
That's right, where I was going, yeah. Yep.
And is a sentence worthy of the following process? A sentence worthy of the following process?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, I mean, part, probably not that.
My, did you say my, for me?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, I would say provided that there, I, I but, disease can be verif, can be verified.
Okay. Cause otherwise that sounds spiritual sense was seventy years old.
Oh, wow. Wow. That's probably when I
You just, you can't do that, you cannot do that.
When I ever had to sixty-five, I'll be, you know, making sixty-five work time. Okay.
Intended immunization schedule, the schedule of intended immunizations statement. Word is this, must be provided by the parent or little guardian. Oh, wait.
This, I, this sound like this is regarding if they're registering as a child, but they don't have the immunizations, but they are trying to catch up on them, so they've got this schedule planned out, so you can't just give them all of them.
Right. You know, the immunizations forms provided by the Department of Health and Welfare or a similar one that is provided, it includes the policy information.
You have to straight copy it, it's all about that.
Okay, so, here, we're not capitalizing things, so maybe we should.
Seems like it's overkill.
Uh, yeah.
It's like, here's the schedule, do you have the schedule, okay, here's your option, intended or exemption. And then we need this schedule form.
To the, the Go ahead. The form they're referring to would come from the health care provider, because they're gonna set up, it's like, okay, your child is going to receive these vaccinations, and we're gonna give them six months, whatever it is, and then they're gonna receive these, so that, I mean, this, this sounds, this is for children who haven't had any, and maybe coming into third grade or something, and so they're behind, we can't give them all. So it's not, it's not our form.
Right, right, yeah, it just says provided by, like, the part, it doesn't even say that. In, in IDAPA rulebook, my point was that, for a parent, it's like, I really have three options, I either have my immunization record, or I have an exemption, or I have an intended schedule.
Yeah, and that's what that's, is stating there.
Well, if you take out all the things that are in there, it's gonna be a lot more complex.
Yeah. Children admitted to school and failing to continue the schedule of intended immunizations will be excluded from school until documentation of administration of the required immunizations is provided by the child's parent, will now be thrown in the custodian or legal guardian. Unless the exemption requirements have been met as identified in Idaho. Why do we keep referring back to that code?
I don't know. And it's already on, uh
It's comply with the immunization But no, I think they're referencing the wrong statute here. It's not that the exemptions is required here, but then here, they're saying, in accordance with the exemption policy, the parent or guardian of the child must comply with the immunization requirements and provide documentation in the form of a valid immunization record at the time of admission and before attendance for their child. Is, is this
Forty-eight oh two is exemption.
Right, but they're saying, in accordance with forty-eight oh two, which is for exemption, the parent-child must comply with the immunization requirements.
I know.
So this should be one.
Right.
Okay, that's where I was like, wait, what are they doing? Okay, so
So what was the reference?
Well, my thing is down here, they're saying, unless exemption requirements have been met as identified, and I just unless the, why can't we just can't we just say, unless the exemption requirements have been met? Okay. Any minor child whose parent or guardian submits a certificate signed by a custodian, or signed by a physician, licensed by a state board of medicine stating the physician's condition of the child is such that all or any of the required immunizations would endanger the life or health of the child is exempt from the immunization requirements.
That's also another, that's a good sentence.
Any minor child whose parent or guardian submits to school officials a certificate signed by a physician licensed by the state board of medicine stating that the physician's condition, physical condition of the child is such that all of the required immunizations would endanger the life or health of the child shall be exempt from provisions, okay, so that's verbatim. Any minor child whose parents, parent or guardian submits a signed statement to the school official stating their objection on religious or other grounds is exempt from the immunization requirements. The parent or guardian can use form provided by the district or submit a written, uh, can use districts. I won't say this, it's thirty-five twenty-five F, comma, which is
I'll just use, yeah, use Idaho School immunization require exemption form. You
Can use policy comment. Or submit, so, let's do this. Or submit a written signed statement that the district will attach to the form. Okay. Any student of majority age who submits a signed statement having, stating that, stating the student's objection or religious or other grounds shall be exempt from any other immunizations of the third. Okay. Yep. Okay. A child exempt under one of the above requirements may be excluded by the district in the event of a disease outbreak. Communication of immunization requirements and exemptions in accordance with Idaho law. Let's change that to code. It's calling it Idaho code, which is the law, but I don't even know that. Um, all communication to parents guardians no longer in the building of the custodians, it's been like two months. Communication to the parents and their guardians regarding immunization requirements shall also describe the exemption and make efforts to thirty-nine. Does it, in the, in this policy?
Okay.
I was gonna go up, scroll up and check, okay. For purposes of Idaho code thirty-nine forty-eight oh two. For purposes of this section, communication, please letters, phone calls, registration packets, et cetera. So, I just don't make that one up, including custodians here, because we included it up there.
Yeah, there's custodians, used a couple times, but not throughout.
I know.
It was a term that we were using earlier on, I thought, it wasn't custodian.
Its parents, legal guardians are custodians.
Were custodians?
Cause they just have custody of the child, so they may be
We all the custo, I thought we hit custodial adults or something, I think we probably did.
Oh, maybe they came up with one when it wasn't here, I don't know. All right. The district shall submit a report of each school's immunization status to the state board of education on or before the first day of November of each year. The report shall include Did we do this? Do we know if we did this?
Uh, we should, I guess.
It's, okay, perfect. So I don't know why that's highlighted. Okay. Is that in, it's IDAPA or?
IDAPA.
IDAPA sixteen oh two fifteen?
Uh, yes.
Perfect, okay. Number of children missing one or more of our doses. Okie dokie. Okay. So have we not done this before?
Yeah, we have, that's why, um, we have the policy, and we've updated this policy before also.
Have we?
Yeah, because they changed the language a couple years ago, and it looks like they updated the statute again this year, the exemption portion of it.
Okay.
Um, so, I pulled back to the, yeah. Now, current policy. Yeah, so adopted uh October ten, two thousand eleven. Uh revised. Two divisions, uh September twenty two, uh twenty twenty. And then another revision revised on uh September twenty third, twenty twenty one.
Okay. So I think we're good. We'll just need to get that done. And then, um, since it's already gone out, it can go to the next board meeting along with the form. We get to move on to, um. Oh payroll, oh wait, yeah, there wasn't, let's. Okay. Oh. Payroll details, salaries are paid on a twelve month basis for full-time certified employees. Good, isn't that awesome, okay. All employees certified and non-certificated. Will be paid on the twentieth day of each. It's important, yeah, exactly. Did I do that full-time? Um, it's because I've been turning everything to Ariel.
Oh.
So much easier on eyes. Salaries are paid on a basis of full-time certification. Will be paid on the twentieth day of each. If the twentieth day was on Saturday, Sunday or a holiday, checks will be available the preceding forty day. And checks need to be mailed if they will be sent out on the twentieth day. Um, direct deposit is available for regular employees. Okay, what's a regular employee? A direct deposit authorization agreement must be completed and on file at the district office no later than the tenth day of the month in which the dis- direct deposit is to begin. Payroll for non-certificated. Okay, I'm going to just highlight this, cause I don't know what regular. What's that?
Employees needs to win out.
Okay. Payroll for non-certificated employees will be completed beginning the sixteenth day of the month, two to fifteenth day of the following month. Payroll deductions maybe.
So. Spell it out here, but we didn't have the. It said twenty eight, eighteen.
We didn't know sixteen or fifteen. Oh.
Make sure people are against getting stand out.
Why is this done in text bodies?
Get your delete key and see what happens.
Okay. Oopsies.
Believe just highlight it again, I'll hit the delete key on the keyboard.
Thank you. But why did this go to sub- subscript, superscript?
Well, that's what it's supposed to do because it recognizes.
Word does it, but this program does not. It has to be a.
Format.
Is it format?
Sure.
Text.
Script. So there's a control plus, there's a control C.
Oh, I didn't even see that one. I just. Control C. No, word. You said it was control plus? Control plus?
No.
Nope.
I.
Control minus.
Doesn't have the shown time out.
Control plus period?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, let's go ten, uh fifteen. Control plus, well, this is stupid, control plus, uh period, alright, it works, but like your fingers are all spread out. Sixteen. Since sixteen, duh. Okay, payroll deductions may be made for professional dues, health and life insurance, approved credit unions and other direct district approved. Benefit programs, example, uh EGD one twenty five, and tax shelters, okay. Alright. Request for. Payroll deductions for annuities must be made on a district provided annuity. I felt compelled to hyphen everything. A district provided annuity authorization form in writing to the Human Resources Department. Requests to start a new annuity, change annuity companies or change annuity deductions must be made either between September fifteen and October fifteen, or March one and April fifteen of each calendar year. An employee may terminate deductions. Okay, that's what I was thinking. That's good. An employee may terminate deductions at any time, employee may not request withholding for more than two annuity companies at any one time. Dates and times for enrollment and for enrollment adjustments in employee insurance programs shall be in accordance with the contract agreement between the insurance provider and school district. Okay.
Fifteen, the twenty eighth. Did you? That one is not fixed.
Thank you. Oh, I think it's just the control minus thing. Not that we don't do the plus thing. Every time I hit the control plus, it goes. Um, okay, I, I'm still bothered by, because I don't think it's. It's for all employees, so. I'm really thinking that should just be marked out.
We always tag, uh. We add an editor, we add a note. This year in Haster, is that good? Do we have? What is the agent? Or. Compared to.
So other than that, once we can get that. Uh, cleared up, can get to go on this one? Okie doke. What's that? We should do it on touches. Didn't even notice that.
She also tried to walk in, but now I'm not. She took her.
Oh. Totally have empathy and props for navigating. Okay, so this one's good to go, once we get regular clarified. Okay, so then acquisition, use and disposal of school property. Okie doke. Which we're changing it to use and disposal of school property. Oh wait, blue as ISBA suggested. Okay. So.
Speaking to the part and require, uh, we'll do, uh. Maybe they have a separate.
Do we have a twenty five ten P?
Possibly.
Selection of literary materials, I know we have this policy, but is that, and why is it a P?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Okay, but is it for selection of, okay. Several crops are just saying that for some reason. Okay.
Yes, they mean those are.
Alright, people. H one of three, H two of three, H three of three, H four of three. H five of three, okay, what, what are we doing?
One of four, two of four, three of four, four of four. But it might not need to be, if all the, the blue is the.
Yeah, we gotta go through.
Recommend it, huh?
Like, yeah, it's pretty. Weirdy. Okay, there we are. So back to the policy, so we're just gonna line this out. We'll keep the name. Real property, within one year prior to acquiring or disposing of real property, the district will cause such property to be appraised by an appraiser certified in the state of Idaho. The appraised value will be used to establish the fair market value of the property. Appraisal shall be exempt from disclosure to the public. Why? If the board is purchasing a site for educational purposes, such a building site must be located within the boundaries of the city limits unless by resolution of the board it is determined that it would be in the best interest of the district to acquire a site outside city limits but within the boundaries of the district. This just does, oh, this is specific to real property? That's not, why didn't we read that?
But why must be within the boundaries of city limits? It comes from the statute actually.
Okay. Alright. So with real properties, we have very little.
But if you think about it, everything here in Rattler is pretty much in the, I mean, until you get out, even Aqua Elementary and City Spirit Lakes and the city.
Right.
You know, everybody, I don't know, the statute for. Uh whatever reason is designated, that's the preferred color because originally I was saying that's only Jordan population was.
Right, like twin and garwood are outside of. Those are in the county, but, um, Brookshire, the land we have in Brookshires in the city. The land by K-Tex in the city, got, you know, John Brown Ben Key for those are city.
Yeah.
I'm just curious why it's, that this building site must be within.
Uh, well, that's such functions. If you read through the whole section, does it say it must be?
It says it must, that such building site must be located within the boundaries. Unless by resolution of the board to change. That's acquired outside the vision of boundaries of the district.
Right, so, like with the population, you're out in twenty one, like, really, not a city out there, so.
So thirty three, six, oh, one. That's been a long board. Alright. Board of trustees of each school district shall have the following characteristics to rent, to contract, to designate and purchase any real property for school purposes or in the operation of the district or remove any building or dispose of any real property. Prior to, but not more than one year, uh prior to any purchase or disposal of real property, the board shall have such property appraised by an appraiser certified in the state of Idaho. Which appraisal shall be entered into the records of the board of trustees and shall be used in establish, to establish, thank you, the value of the real property. The board of trustees shall determine the size of the site necessary for school purposes. Site shall be located within the incorporated limits of any city within the district, provided, however, that if the board finds that it is not in the best interest of the electors and the students of the district to locate the site within the incorporated city limits of the city, the board, by duly appointed adopted resolution setting forth the reasons for its finding, may designate a site located elsewhere within the district. In elementary school districts, except upon removal for highway purposes, a site may be designated or charged, changed only after approval of two-thirds or more of the electors voting at the annual meeting. Okay, so. What I'm curious about. So. Well, the, this thing, it says the appraisal shall be exempt from disclosure to the public. There's nothing in the statute that says that.
Uh, they say, well, so if you go to seventy four, two oh six. Or seventy four, two oh, whatever is the, uh.
We'll just go there for the moment and look at that.
That means there's something to do with the process.
To consider the hiring, the evaluation, to acquire an interest in real property not owned by a public agency. To consider records that are exempt from disclosure as provided in chapter one, Idaho. Which one?
Exempt from disclosure.
Okay. Okay, so. Alright. Okay, so. If the board, so let's read this again. Within one year prior to acquiring or disposing of real property.
Well, because they wanna make sure the appraisal is within one year, either selling it or acquiring it.
So it's, it's updated, it's current.
Prior to, but not more than one year prior to, so, okay. Personal property. The district may purchase personal property as deemed necessary for the effective operation of the district by any means deemed appropriate. When the expenditure of funds will be less than twenty five thousand dollars. When the purchase of personal property with the exception of peripheral materials is reasonably expected to cost twenty five thousand dollars or more. The district shall comply with statutory bidding requirements found in chapter twenty eight, title sixty seven. Conveyance of property. Within one year prior to conveyance, all real and personal property with an estimated value of one thousand dollars or greater. Shall be appraised, which appraisal shall be entered into the records of the board. One thousand or greater, for property with a value of one thousand dollars or greater. Such property will be appraised, the board may dispose of such property by sealed bids or by public auction to the highest bidder. Notice of the time and method of the sale shall be published twice in accordance. With Idaho code thirty three four two. For property with a value of thousand dollars or greater, the property may be sold at public auction or by sealed bids. That's what we're saying up here, as the board shall determine to the highest bidder. Such property may be sold for cash or for such terms and conditions as the board shall determine for a period not exceeding ten years. With an annual rate of interest on deferred payments not less than seven percent. The title to all property sold by contract shall be retained in the name of the district until full payment has been made. By the purchaser and title to all properties sold under a note or mortgage or deed of trust. Shall be transferred to the purchaser at the point of sale, under the terms and conditions of the mortgage or deed of trust that the board shall determine. Notice of the time and conditions of such sale shall be published twice. And if thereof made in accordance with subsection two and three of section thirty three. Well. Yeah, I guess, but.
Can you just change that one? That's actually the hard part.
Oh, thank you. You're right. Yeah, okay, find the easy route. The board may accept the highest bid, may reject any bid or reject all bids during the sealed bid or public auction process, no property of the district. Can be sold for less than its appraised value, if thereafter no satisfactory bid is made and received, the board may proceed under its own direction to sell. And convey the property to the highest bid the market will bear. The highest price the market will bear. Okie doke. For less than a thousand dollars. For property that is estimated. That has an estimated value of less than one thousand dollars. The board may dispose of such property by sealed bid or by public auction. However, prior to disposal of the same, at least one published advertisement is required. Not just. The board may sell property with an estimated value of less than one thousand without appraisal. By sealed bid or public auction, provided that there has not been less than one public. Published advertiser prior to the sale of the property. When the appraised value of the property is less than one thousand, one single notice of publication shall be sufficient. And the property shall be sold for sealed bid or at public auction. The board may accept the highest bid, may reject the bid or reject all bids. So, this is a little bit more.
It's a very small bit, I mean, it's. Is then they go less than five hundred, so there's less than a thousand. It just seems to break it down, so it's greater than a thousand. So it's really just anything from fifteen hundred to a thousand dollars if that process is.
Well, our, the black print is our first is the board, is the current policy, the blueprint is the recommendation by ISBA. Same with the first paragraph, we didn't kind of clarify.
Right, right, I'm just, I'm just saying it's kind of a con. Breakdown, so anything greater than a thousand but less than twenty five.
It's a thousand or greater, and then less than a thousand, less than five hundred. So.
The less, I'm just saying, less than a thousand is anything from a thousand to fifteen hundred. Or I mean, uh. Five, five hundred and one to a thousand, excuse me. It, it just seems like a, uh.
Wait, what are you talking about?
I, it just, the less than a thousand bit, it's a, it's a.
So you think the less than a thousand should be five hundred and one, or five hundred?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying, it just seems like an odd breakdown, I guess. Since it's anything more than a thousand but less than twenty five thousand. And then it's less than a thousand and then less than five hundred. Why not just? Less than a thousand. Or less than five hundred.
Okay, so on the first paragraph though, the first thousand dollars or greater. Do we wanna stick with our current language, or do we want to utilize the? Language down here? Which seems more robust. Okay, so it's like thirty four, thirty three.
Yeah.
That's thirty three four oh two is what they're referencing. That's elections. Thirty three four oh two.
So does the district act, I mean, cause there's a lot of wording in there as far as deferred payments and. Routine that, is that something happening there?
Idaho code thirty three four oh two is not notice requirements.
There's a section two and three. Well, it's, that language is.
Oh, it is, I lied, thirty three four oh two is notice requirements. But that's for school elections.
And thirty three six oh one is the real property acquisition and disposal and use of the sale. Which is, uh. So I don't know what's.
It's a school, it's a section of.
Notice of annual reading of elementary school districts as provided for its actual category, intend to discontinue as school. Shall be posted not less than ten days and published in once. So this is if we're gonna dispose of a school. Notice this calling.
No, but that's thirty, thirty three. Six oh one is. That's the, the section of that.
And that they are, they are also referencing in the language, they reference this thingy four oh two. But you are correct, thirty three six oh one is actually the disposal.
Of the section within, yep.
Okay, so. Let's look, let's go back.
So thirty three four oh two two is probably what they're referencing, notice calling for bids for the acquisition, use or disposal of real and personal property is provided for in thirty three six oh one.
So this should be thirty three six oh one.
No, it is thirty three four oh two.
Is actually, no, but thirty three four oh two is about.
Thirty three four oh two two is the noticing of thirty three six oh one.
Okay.
So thirty three six oh one says, here's how you do it, here's a total now five hundred thousand, blah, blah, blah. And it says you have to notice, but this four oh two actually tells you how the noticing is done. It would be the case procedure.
So we, alright. The section within four oh two.
No, so thirty three six oh one is its own title.
Own title.
Okay, and that deals with the thousand dollar, five hundred dollar, one, the number.
Okay.
And in there, it says you have to notice it, but it doesn't tell you how to notice. Thirty three four oh two is the procedure of notice for the thirty two six oh one.
Probably, okay. Gotcha. Which is that different from other notices? Do we mean? Or is it the same general process?
Uh, they're all different, yeah, depending on what's happening, I mean, the noticing for. Different meanings is different noticing for self-acquisition, is different for those, uh. Elections and voting is different, I mean, yeah, everything has its own requirement.
So this is specific, uh.
Oh, it said subsections two and three, but they didn't.
Right. Well, okay, so I think personally. We should go with the blue because that is the actual statute.
That's very simple though.
It is. It should be, but let's do this. Um. But on this one, I think this should say. So here we have, yeah, here we have one thousand or greater. So this should be nine ninety nine.
But it is the same process though. The statute brings it out.
What do you mean?
The five hundred dollars versus the thousand dollars.
Right.
Right, it's just that, clarifying the less than five hundred.
So this, five hundred to nine hundred and ninety nine, cause this is a thousand dollars or greater. So this is five hundred to nine ninety nine, and this is less than five hundred. So it should be four ninety nine. It doesn't?
No.
Are you sure?
I'm positive, I'm working at it.
I believe you.
Thirty three six oh one, it literally breaks it out like it is right on there. So there's your thousand, there's your five hundred value, less than five hundred.
The property may be disposed of in the most cost-effective and expedient manner by an employee of the district empowered for that purpose by the board. Provided however, such employee shall notify the board prior to disposal of said property. And then real and personal property may be exchanged here under. For other property, provided however, that aside from the provisions of this paragraph, any school district. May buy a vote of one half plus one of the members of the board of trustees. By resolution duly adopted, authorized, authorize the transfer or conveyance of the bill or personal property. Owned, uh, by such school district to the government of the United States. Any city, county, the state of Idaho, any hospital district organized, or not, any cooperative service. Agency form presented this, uh, school district.
Different between the thousand, less than a thousand, and five hundred.
Right.
Even the noticing, see, we go even up to the top right here, uh, quote. See where the thousand is, if you back up, except for the appraised value.
Here?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, except.
Right here.
One thousand.
Yes, so, so that's the only time in six oh one, it's actually the procedure of noticing. For, because of the dollar amount, so the other ones, the five hundred, the thousand, the less than.
Right.
Are all different, they can't be combined.
No, but that's not what she, she was doing, she changed that. Just to clarify.
I was just trying to make sure that if we're, if the property value is six hundred and eighty eight dollars. These are the requirements we need to meet, the board may sell personal property with an estimated value of less than one thousand dollars without appraisal by sealed bid. Or at public auction, provided that there have not. That there has not been less than one published advertisement prior to the sale of said property. When the appraised value of the property is less than one thousand. One single notice by publication shall be sufficient, the property shall be sold by sealed bid or at public auction. The board may accept the highest bid, may reject any bid or reject all bids. And then the less than five hundred simply states. For property that has an estimated value of less than five hundred dollars. The property may be disposed of in the most cost-effective and expedient manner by an employee of the district empowered for that purpose by the board. Provided however, such employee should notify the board prior to disposal of said property. So I think that's its specific?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so are we good with leaving these titles, or do you want the titles removed?
No, the titles are very, I think, the statute uses.
Right, it helps deliver me that, there's a lot of language there, so if you have those.
So, right, it doesn't, so do you want me to go back to less than one thousand dollars?
I mean, that's what it says.
Okay.
I'm just, I understand why you did it.
Okay.
So if it's five oh one.
Right.
Right?
No, if it's five hundred, it's here.
Five hundred, right, it falls into the less than a thousand.
Yeah, if it's four ninety-nine, then it's not here, it's down here.
Right, so we're just moving down, go back up?
Yeah, to nine ninety-nine, cause this is a thousand dollars or more. Thousand or greater. So, just making it very clear. Your boundary. I suppose though, I guess, playing the devil's advocate. If we were wanting to sell something for. Uh, five hundred and five dollars. No, if we were selling something for four hundred and fifty dollars, if we wanted to adhere to this, we could. I don't know why we would, but, I mean, we could. So, by labeling the segments, we. I don't know. What would you like to see happen?
I would try to consider that way of writing.
We're trying to help the reader discern what was meant by the language below the caption.
It should, it should be clear enough, it's less than a thousand. It certainly looks clearer than a hundred.
Although, we could go back to just less than one thousand dollars, because I get what you're saying, that's just the verbiage from the statute. Would you feel more comfortable if we did that?
No, I would.
Okey-dokey.
Because here's the thing, is I know we're trying to make it clear.
Yeah.
But we also have to remember, it is a legal binding document, we will be held to it.
Donated property, real property is donated to the district. The board may, within a period of one year. Period of one year from the time of the appraisal, sell the property without additional advertising. Or bidding within one year of the time of the initial appraisal. The initial appraisal was dictated. Otherwise, the board must have new appraisals made, and again, publish notice for bids as with other property. Okay, so.
It's been less than a year, it's really. If you, if you was donated and you wanna dispose of it or do something with it within a year, you can use the virtual appraisal.
So, this is donated real property only, this isn't about any other kind of property. Cause we've had that issue before too. So if real property is donated to the district, the board may, within a period of one year from the time of the appraisal, sell the property without additional advertising. Without additional advertising or bidding.
I think it should, it should say may sell the property.
The board may, within a period of one year from the time of the appraisal.
Oh, okay, the may is, okay.
Right, sell the property, that's okay, without additional advertising or bidding. Um. But we have within one year twice, because this was added.
So there's what it says, if the real property was donated to the school district, the board may. Within a period of one year from the time of the appraisal. Sell the property without additional advertising or bidding. Otherwise, the board of trustees must process. Or must have new appraisals made and again published notice for bids as before.
So otherwise, the board must have new appraisals made and again published notices for bids as with other property. Does it say as?
Says as before.
Okay. So, if real property was donated to the district, the, the board may, within a period of one year from the time of the appraisal. Sell the property without additional advertising or bidding. Otherwise, the board must have new appraisals made and again publish notice for bids as before. Okay? Exchange of property. The board may exchange real or personal property or other property, provided that, what other property would it be? Um. Such property is appraised. One half plus one of the members of the full board determine such conveyance or exchange, exchange is in the best interest of the district and. A majority of the full board determine such conveyance exchange is in the best interest of the district. And a resolution is passed. This is driving me. Do this, because, do it right. Clear this for me. So. Such property is appraised. One half plus one of the members of the full board determine such conveyance or exchange is in the best interest of the district. So this just, this seems like this should be point two.
Look, I just, they're using that term. Because our boards are. Same type, it might be five, it might be seven.
Please.
Says real and personal property may be exchanged here and there for other property. Provided however, that aside from the provisions of this paragraph, meaning from three six oh one. Any school district may, by a vote of one half plus one of the members of the full board of trustees. By resolution duly adopted. Authorize the transfer or conveyance of any real or personal property owned by some school district to the government of the United States. Any city, counties, state of Idaho, any hospital district organized under chapter five law. Any cooperative service agency form pursuant to section of that. Any other school district, the Idaho Housing and Finance Association. Any public charter school, any library district, any community college district, or any recreation district. With or without a consideration accruing. To the school district when in the judgment of the board of trustees and is for the interest of said school district. That said, transfer or conveyance may be made. Then it says, prior to any transfer or conveyance of any real property or personal property pursuant to this paragraph or deed. The board shall have the property appraised by appraisal certified in the state of Idaho, which appraisal, appraisal. Shall be entered in the records of the board of trustees and shall be used to establish the value of the real or personal property. Find however. If the board of trustees finds it is in the school district's best interests. To trade personal property to a person or entity for like tiny personal property. The board of trustees may vote to elect to do so. The board of trustees may elect to abstain from the appraisal of the personal property if the estimated value of said. Property is less than five thousand dollars.
Okay, this blue paragraph is verbatim of what you just read, starting from the prior. And I do believe that all of these you identified. Um, but there is other language.
Couple other ones in there.
Okay, so, let's go through, so.
Those, all those.
Yes, so we started with the US government.
Okay, yeah, the United States, any city.
Okay.
County.
Yep.
State of Idaho.
Yep.
Hospital district.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, it does say organized under specific chapter title.
Okay, give me that language, so I can.
Hospital district organized under chapter thirteen, title thirty-nine.
Chapter thirteen.
Title thirty-one, title thirty-nine.
Okay.
Uh, any cooperative service agency formed pursuant to section.
Cooperative what?
Service agency. Formed pursuant to. Section thirty-three, three seventeen. Into the next, next tier of the subdivision is, uh, other school district.
Okay.
The Idaho Housing and Finance Association.
Idaho Housing and Finance is down here, so it's a bit. Okay.
Uh, any public charter school. The library district.
Okay, library district.
Uh, community college, any community college district.
Okay.
Or any recreation district.
So we don't call that a junior college district in there?
No, it says any community college.
Right, okay, or, or recreation district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, with or without any consideration of the accruing, accruing to the school district. When, okay, that's.
Okay. Okay, so these are all, um, okay, so I want to do. So it'll fit on one line. I was gonna do it up here, but then I'm like, uh, I don't know.
All right, so it should be other school districts.
Now, this part needs to be changed. For exchange of properties, so the board may exchange real or personal property for other property, provided that. This was not part of what you read. I think however, it's something down here.
Yes.
Okay, so. We are going to remove that. Can you read the statute again?
Sure. May be exchanged here and there for other property. Provided however, that aside from the provisions of this paragraph, any school district.
Okay.
May buy a vote of.
Okay.
Um, we got that one half plus one of the members of the board.
Okay.
And then the, uh, resolution. Adoption.
Right here.
And it says all those transfer conveyance. Uh, and it goes into, uh, government of the United States, blah 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 blah.
Okay.
And then the appraisal part is more, yes.
Right there, okay, so. The board may exchange real or personal property for other property, provided that. One half plus one of the members of the full board determine such conveyance or exchange is in the best interest of the district. Or. A resolution is passed authorizing such.
No, no, or.
Oh, it's not?
It has to have a resolution, so the resol, when they, when you vote, then the resolution takes place.
Okay, and a resol, okay, so. Then they shouldn't be done this way.
It's just a comma, the, the. Vote, one half plus one of the members of the full board of trustees.
Okay.
By resolution duly adopted, authorize the transfer, so when the vote takes place, then the resolution happens. And we say, here's what we're gonna do. Here's why, you know, this is what, it's just like what we went through with the, uh. With Rathburn, the city of Rathburn, from this piece over here, and we went back and go over. So technically, there should have been an existing resolution somewhere in the record for that to have happened.
Okay, so. One half plus one of the members of the full board votes and a resolution is passed.
Yeah, duly adopted, duly adopted resolution.
Duly adopted. Spell that degree. Authorizing such exchange of real and or personal property. Determine such conveyance or exchanges in the best interest of the district.
Right, yes, you need, that's really what it says, is the conveyance, the transfer or conveyance, not the stage, I understand why they use the word.
In the best interest of the district and. A majority of the full board, so, okay, so, we're going to. The board may exchange, uh, provided that. We are going to take this. There. Trust, district. Okay, but then how do we get to these things that we can?
Uh, that is the next, but it assumes it says, well, the. It says transfer or conveyance, right?
Okay.
To these entities. And then at the very end is what just talks about it being in the best interest. The reason you're doing this because it is. Uh, provided however, the board of trustees finds it is in the school district's best interest to trade. A person or entity by fine, the district's best interest, dah dah dah, so, um. And if you abstain, you may appraisal if it's less than five thousand dollars. But all of that is.
In the best interest of the district, is that right?
Well, the best interest of the district, same the statute comes at the very end of the decision. I mean, that is why you're doing it, but the.
So the board may exchange real or personal property for other property, provided that one half plus one of the members of the full board votes and a resolution. Is duly adopted, authorizing such exchange for real and or personal property. And such transfer or conveyance to, okay, that doesn't make any sense. Because this was determining.
Such exchange, real property. By resolution duly adopted, comment, authorize the transfer or conveyance of any real or personal property owned by the school district to.
So, votes and a resolution is duly adopted, authorizing such exchange of real and or personal property and determining such transfer or conveyance to. These entities. Okay, prior to any transfer, okay, so that was verbatim of what you read.
Yeah.
Equipment acquired under a federal award. When, we have these. I don't know that they're bolded, are they bolded? No, they are not bolded. All right, when it is determined that original or replacement equipment as defined in policy seventy-two seventy. Do we have that also? Seventy-two seventy. Acquired under a federal award is no longer needed for the original project or program. Or for other activities currently or previously supported by a federal awarding agency. Okay, the superintendent or business manager, now have a business manager. Will can contact the awarding agency or pass through for a state administered grant or disposition instructions. Generally, disposition of equipment is dependent on its fair market value at the time of disposition. If the item has a current. Fair market value of five thousand or less, it may be retained, sold, or otherwise disposed of with no further obligation to the federal awarding agency. If the item has a current fair market value of more than five thousand dollars, the federal awarding agency is entitled to the federal share of the current market value. Or sales proceeds. If acquiring replacement equipment. The district may use the equipment to be, to be replaced as a trade-in or sell the property and use the proceeds to offset the cost. Of the replacement property. District will use whatever means available to ensure the highest possible return on the items sold. Capital expenditures for special purpose equipment are allowable as direct costs. Provided that items with a unit cost of five thousand or more have the prior written approval of the federal awarding agency. Or pass through entity. Therefore, the district should request prior approval from the straight, state department of education for the purchase, uh, for the purchase or. The disposition of equipment purchased with federal funds that have a value of five thousand dollars or more. That's a lot. Okay.
And they're quite.
Okay. Right, and we typically put federal after state? I did a control X, then we had to do a control C. Now we're going backwards. Okay. So, that was a whole mouthful, I don't know if we need to critique any of it, do you?
It's, it's very lengthy.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that one, the very first medical, uh, they just, the equipment disposal would be pages and pages and pages.
Okay.
I mean, there's.
So, do you think it's sufficient the way it is? I mean, do we need to do anything to it?
I don't think so, the only thing I would question, you know, maybe, uh, Jessica can give, um. Because the only thing I would wanna know is. See, and here, in the one that they, um, cited, the, uh. The two hundred three thirteen deals with, um, equipment of ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
So let me look at the other one and see if it's dealing with the five thousand dollar. Maybe we have to cite both because it would cost the, the bond to this week.
Okay. So should I message Jessica on this?
I would ask, I would just ask for it. Does this seem reasonable to read?
All right, so. You're good to go, because we are ten minutes overdue.
Just go ahead and.
Ten policy committee, it is seven thirty-eight.